Let's begin.
I think we're ready to start recording. Good afternoon. This is a review session of the New York City Planning Commission of Monday, September 9, 2019. A quorum is present. The time is 1:01 PM. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a city map amendment in the Bronx Community District 6. Our presenter is Philip Montgomery.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For certification, I have two applications by the New York City Department of Transportation, Division of Bridges, seeking amendments to the city map. The proposed amendments involve the modification of legal grades on East 175th and East 180th Streets between Park Avenue East and Park Avenue West in the Belmont neighborhood of the Bronx Community District 6. The proposed amendments would facilitate the rehabilitation of two bridges over the Harlem Line of Metro North Railway. The project sites are located in an M-1-1 zoning district just north of the Cross Bronx Expressway, approximately 1.5 miles south and west of the Bronx Zoo and Fordham University. This is an aerial view of the East 175th Street Bridge. This bridge was built in 1889 and reconstructed in 1938. It is a 62-foot-long, single-span arch that spans four lines of the Metro North Railway, carrying two 17-foot-wide westbound traffic lanes with 13-foot-wide sidewalks on both sides. The picture on the north is looking south at the bridge, and in the background you can see the Cross Bronx Expressway, and the bottom picture is looking north at the bridge. The subject portion of East 175th Street is city-owned, mapped to a width of 60 feet and is approximately 200 feet in length. The profile is being erased approximately 1 foot with a change in legal grade of 2 feet. Here is an aerial view of the East 180th Street Bridge. This bridge was built in 1889 and rehabilitated in 1905 and 1936. It also spans four lines of the Metro North Railway. It is a 60-foot-one-long, single-span arch that carries 1 22-foot-wide traffic lane in each direction with 18-foot sidewalks on both sides. And again, the picture to the north is looking south at the bridge, and the bottom picture is looking north at the bridge. The subject portion of East 180th Street is city-owned, mapped to a width of 80 feet and approximately 350 feet in length. The profile is being raised approximately 1 foot with a change in legal grade of 1.5 feet. The purpose of the two projects is to maintain a state of good repair and increase bridge service life. The current bridges have shown signs of deterioration, with most recent safety flags coming 2017. The reason for raising the profiles is to maintain the existing clearances over the railway while increasing the girder depths to upgrade existing utilities and add a new 12-inch water main on the East 175th Street Bridge. The project will also improve the roadway approaches by correcting the existing cross-slopes and stopping-site distances. Here, these are some pictures of some of the deterioration that is taking on in the two bridges. The proposed bridges are very similar in design with the exception of the girders. The East 175th Street Bridge has concrete girders, and the girders on the East 180th Street Bridge are steel. Both bridges have new sidewalks, new New York State DOT handrails, and new PDC-approved safety fencing. Construction on the East 180th Street Bridge is expected to begin next month and will last approximately 27 months. Construction on the East 175th Street Bridge is expected to begin in October of 2020 and is expected to last approximately 19 months. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Hallelujah.
Commissioner Marine.
So, Philip, thank you. How will traffic run in that neighborhood? Are the bridges going to be closed altogether?
No, there will be one line of traffic open at all times during the construction. It'll be staged and phased construction.
And they're going to raise it 1 foot, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Is that for something special underneath? Is there... Or just because we want to get that additional height in for the water main?
Exactly. We want to keep the clearances in. We're raising it here because the girder depths are getting deeper.
Got it.
For the new utilities.
Thank you.
I have to admit, I was sold when I saw that the last rehabilitation was in 1936.
Been in that community all my life. It's nice to see that they're getting renovated. It's really... They need it, so it's great.
Okay. And with that, the application is certified.
Thank you.
Item 2 on the agenda has been laid over. Item 3, page 27, is a non-ULP referral for a minor change to an urban renewal plan in Brooklyn Community District 5. Our presenter is Alexandra Patty Diaz.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development proposes a minor change to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan to facilitate the last phase of the plan resulting on 560 affordable units for a total of 2,477 units. The proposed project is in East New York Community District 5 in Brooklyn. HPD is requesting a minor change to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan adopted in 1967. The plan has been amended three times to facilitate diverse residential, commercial, and community facility developments in the area. The Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan is located on the south portion of East New York. The urban renewal area is bounded by Flatlands Avenue to the north, Fountain Avenue to the east, Belt Parkway to the south, and Hendricks Creek to the west. Furfield Flatlands IBC is located to the north, Spring Creek Park to the east, the Started City Housing Development to the west, and two NYCDEB wastewater treatment plants in both sides, west and east of the urban renewal plan area. The plan has been developed through a multi-phase project that includes a mixed-use residential and commercial developments with up to 2,477 affordable home ownership and rental units, regional and local retail spaces, community facility, and open space uses. Here you can see photos of the developments built so far, highlighting to your top right homeowner affordable units. And the bottom right is Gateway Mall, which is considered the most successful mall in the borough and one of the top 10 in the city and in the country. The proposed project area is located on the northwest corner of the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Area that corresponds to sites, urban renewal sites 3A, 3B, 3D, 3E, 3F, 6A, and 7A. The land use designation for this site is residential. This project area is bounded by Flatlands Avenue to the north, Vandelia Avenue to the south, Elton Street to the east, and Gateway Drive to the west. The area is currently vacant under developed land, mapped within an R6 zoning district. The fifth phase is expected to produce 560 residential units as part of the Phase 5 of the NEIMIA Spring Creek Program. It will consist of approximately 70 four-story octet buildings. HPD is requesting a minor change of the plan to increase the total maximum number of dwelling units in Section C3C1 from 2,385 dwelling units to 2,477 dwelling units. It's also asking to modify the Table A of the Urban Renewal Plan to modify the total maximum number of units that will increase from 432 to 560 on development sites 3B, 3D, 3E, 3F, 6A, and 7A, and to modify the high limits per meter from 3 to 4 stories for the urban renewal development sites 3B, 3D, 3E, and 6A. I'm open to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Levin.
Yes, it's indicated that all of these will be affordable units?
Correct.
Under what program and what are the levels of affordability?
I don't have the specifics.
Okay, maybe when we come back. Yes, thank you.
Okay, then we will refer this to the community board for 45 days.
Item 4, page 70, is a pre-hearing review of a UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned land, zoning map and zoning text amendments, and special permit in Brooklyn Community District 5. Alexandra Patty Diaz will present.
The New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, on behalf of Help USA, proposes a set of land use actions to facilitate the redevelopment of an existing 192-family homeless shelter to afford new buildings with approximately 324 affordable units and a new homeless shelter building with approximately 195 units in East New York, Brooklyn. The actions requested are a UDAP designation, proper approval, and disposition of city-owned property, a zoning map amendment, a zoning tax amendment to designate an MAH area, and a zoning special permit pursuant to CR74743 to waive bulk regulations. The project is located in East New York Community District 5 in Brooklyn at 515 Blake Avenue between Hinsale Street and Snedeker Avenue, surrounded by residential and industrial uses. The area is generally a low-to-medium-dempsey neighborhood containing a mix of residential, commercial, community, facility, and industrial uses. The area is mainly map R6 with a C23 commercial overlays map to a depth of 150 feet on either side of Blake Avenue. A C43 district is mapped along Sutter Avenue to a depth of 150 feet. The project area encompasses all the block 3766, which is bounded by Sutter Avenue to the north, Blake Avenue to the south, Hinsale Street to the east, and Snedeker Avenue to the west. Lot 49 is a 5,000-square-feet parcel located on the southeast corner of the block. It is occupied by a six-story residential building, which is privately owned. Lot 1, the development site, is approximately 95,000 square feet and has frontages along all four streets bounded by the block. It is currently occupied by Help One Plaza, a three-story family shelter complex built in 1988 and operated by an affiliate of Help USA. It includes 192 shelter units, daycare, and early childhood education facility, staff office, small hospital, and an outdoor central courtyard with play equipment. The proposed development will replace the existing Help One Plaza shelter complex on the development site with approximately 387,000-square-feet mixed-use development consisting of four new buildings. The shelter, Building A, will rise up to a nine-story building. The uppermost three stories will be set back approximately 25 feet from Sutter Avenue's street wall. The applicant team has provided this view where you can see how the ground floor is activated with commercial use and shelter entrance on Sutter Avenue. Additionally, the building sits down towards the lower portion of the complex on the side streets. The affordable and supporting housing buildings B and C will range from 6 to 8 stories. Highest portions of the building are located towards the shelter, and lower portions towards the rest of the side street. The applicant team has provided this view from Hinsale Street that shows how multiple setbacks, facade recesses, as well as variation of facade treatment, will be provided through the development. Additionally, multiple entrances are provided on the ground floor level while using multiple design strategies to provide privacy on the ground floor units while activating the sidewalk. Affordable housing building D will range from 6 to 10 stories. Highest portions of the development are located towards Blake Avenue, and lower portions are located towards Snedeker Avenue. Setbacks, facade recesses, as well as variation in the facade treatments will be provided throughout the building. The applicant team has provided this view from the sidewalk on Snedeker Avenue that shows the ground-floor mezzanine apartments with front doors and front yards areas opening directly to the avenue, multiple entrances throughout the street up to Blake Avenue. At the center of the development, in the rear yard of each building and aligned with the cellar level, there will be a shared landscape courtyard containing approximately 26,000 square feet of outdoor open space. Approximately 7,000 square feet of the courtyard will be utilized by the occupants of Building A, the shelter. The remaining approximately 19,000 square feet will be utilized by the rest of the buildings. The team has provided an updated render of the courtyard where, among other design strategies, we can see more clearly the multiple entrances that are connecting the courtyard with the cellar level, as well as incorporating facade treatments provided on the street onto the courtyard to break the scale. This space will provide both active and passive recreational uses for occupants of the proposed building and will be improved with trees, planting, seating, and play areas. This additional view provided by the applicant, we can see how the community rooms, multipurpose room, as well as the direct access of each building will make accessible this space for all tenants of the buildings. Canopies to several entrances points throughout the courtyard are provided to reinforce the entries and how the cellar programs are connecting with each other. In order to facilitate the project, HPD is requesting four actions. A designation of an urban development action area and approval of an urban development action area project and disposition of a city-owned property of just development site Block 3766, Lot 1. The development site will be conveyed to a developer selected by HPD, Help USA. HPD is seeking an approval of a zoning map amendment for the whole project area, Blocks 3766. The proposed zoning district includes a R7DC24 district located 150 feet from Sutter Avenue at the northern end of the block, another R7DC14 district located within 100 feet from Blake Avenue at the southern side of the block, and an R68 district covering the remaining mid-block portion of the zoning lot between the two R7DC24 and R7DC14 districts. HPD proposes to map the project area as an MAH area by adding the area to the maps in Appendix F of the zoning resolution. Option 1 has been selected. The proposed large-scale special permit will be applied only to the development site. HPD is seeking a special permit that will allow the distribution of floor area across four proposed buildings that share a single zoning lot with disregard of the zoning district's boundaries at Set 4 in ZR74743. Pursuant to the special permit, up to 20,000 square feet of the community facility floor area from the southern R7DC14 district and up to 3,000 square feet of the community facility floor area from the mid-block R68 district will be transferred to the northern R7DC24 district to facilitate the development of the shelter. The statement of findings provided by the applicant can be found in your briefing packages. In order to achieve a superior site plan, the applicant is proposing to replace a three-story temporary shelter with a development that increases the use efficiency of the site by building a new shelter with more than 300 affordable housing units, as well as commercial uses. This is achieved by providing the highest portion of the development that are located towards the avenue, fully using the permitting zoning district envelopes, while lowest portion of the development are located towards the side streets. At the ground floor, commercial uses are incorporated on the avenues to complement the existing commercial corridors on Sutter and Blake Avenues, including two main entrances to the shelter in each side of Sutter Avenue. On the side streets, multiple street wall recesses and ground floor entrances are provided on many of the buildings and mezzanines to be reflective of the context while also activating the side street and the sidewalks. This project was certified on May 20 of this year. Community Board did not hold a meeting of this project. Brooklyn Borough President held a meeting in July 22. Until this point, we haven't received their recommendations. And the City Planning Commission public hearing is scheduled for next Wednesday, September 11. I'm open to answer any questions.
I thought I would just start by making an observation. I had the opportunity to go with Alexandra to look at the building. The existing building was built to be temporary, and it shows. But interestingly, it is built in the shape with an interior courtyard, which the applicant has described as a place of refuge, safety for the families. And the courtyard, while not as lushly landscaped as the illustration, was well-used. The other thing that I was struck by was that just a block away, maybe Alexandra, you could call it up, Help USA runs another facility of the same style, the same scale, and the differences are quite marked. That one was built to be permanent, and it is a night-and-day difference from the matter that's before us. And with that, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Alexandra, our text indicates that no developer has been selected yet by HPD?
The developer is Help USA.
Oh, they're going to develop it?
Yeah.
Okay. So then they'll be prepared to talk about the transition and what's happening with the current occupants of the site?
Correct.
What if any preferences will be given to them in the new?
Correct. On Wednesday, the applicant team, HPD representative, Help USA representative, as well as the architects, are going to be explaining the project and the transition plan for the current tenants of the building.
Thank you.
Commissioner Deloose.
I'm trying to remember the last time we didn't have either recommendation from the community board or the borough president before the hearing. Are we expecting to hear from either of them formally, either at the hearing or before the hearing?
We have invited the community board representative to attend the public hearing on Wednesday, regardless that we haven't received an official communication for them to speak directly to you with the opinion of the development. I hope they can come. With the borough president, to my knowledge, they were preparing their recommendations, so I'm expecting that we are going to have them hopefully before the vote.
I'll note that you'll see this on another matter that comes before us. This community board has had difficulty reaching quorum.
Yes, tough. Yeah, I know, it's summertime. I guess one thing I would ask the developers, then, and Help USA, if they could speak to any communication that they had with the community board and the borough president's office, so they could be prepared for that, that'd be helpful.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, and I would be interested in some more insight into the decisions made on the ground floor that would retain privacy. I mean, you mentioned that some consideration was given to that, but it's difficult to see specifically from the plans.
On the... Throughout the whole development?
Yeah, and how we're making sure that those ground floor units are, you know, offer privacy.
So the proposed envelope, the lines have been modified to push the street wall a few feet from the lot lines, so it's flexible enough that a lot of recesses can be provided for those ground floor units.
I see that in some places, but not necessarily all. And I was also wondering, this is a larger site, you know, was any consideration given to raising the first floor a little bit so that the window is not perfectly in line with pedestrians and other decisions that were made along those lines?
The applicant can explain more on Wednesday.
Marine.
Alexandra, thank you. I have a couple of questions. So my first would be, do we have... I see that in the presentation, we show a couple of the interior buildings and show some sort of apartment layout. Do we know what the layouts are going to be at the shelter building?
They were included as illustrative drawings on the package, but I will refer to the applicant team to explain the layout of the apartments on Wednesday.
Is it anticipated that they're going to have like a complete apartment with kitchen? Is that the anticipation here?
The drawings that I have seen, they include kitchens, but I will refer to the applicant team to explain more the layout of the apartments.
And then, how many units are currently on the site?
192.
92. So it is possible that Building A will absorb all of the 192... It's intended to absorb all of it?
Correct. It's proposed to completely replace the existing shelter. And additional three units, I believe, is an architectural... Getting the floor plate and adding those three.
And then two more questions. One is about the open space. It says that there'll be 7,000 square feet for the shelter and another allocation for the rest of the buildings. Is it intended that there's going to be a separation between the two?
Correct.
And is there a reason for the separation?
I would... The applicant could explain more the rationale to separate them, but to my knowledge, the open space of the shelter is directly connected to the daycare, and there's a responsibility from DHS and the tenants of the building for safety and how the layout of the building can work.
And lastly... HPD will explain at greater length, but they let us know that it is because the shelter has hours by which people have to be in that they were required to have a separate space. We had pushed back on that.
Yeah. It seems like you're segregating folks, and it just doesn't feel comfortable. And, you know, when you try to make everybody feel the same, it doesn't feel like it's the same. And then lastly, on the affordability breakdown on Slide 25, you don't have any breakdowns for Building A. I know they're formerly homeless from shelters, but if that could be provided, that would be interesting to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Then we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
All right. The Alexandra Patty Diaz show continues on Item 5, page 109. It's a pre-hearing review of a site selection and acquisition in Brooklyn Community District 5.
Yeah, we're excited to see this project in East New York coming up. This is a proposed action by the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation and the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services for the site selection and acquisition of a property by the city to expand Green Gems Garden in East New York, Brooklyn. Prior actions to the site are related to the East New York rezoning approved by the commission in 2016. The project area is located in Cypress Hill neighborhood, surrounded by residential and commercial uses. The area is served by numerous city and non... Sorry, I didn't change the slide. The area is served by numerous city and non-city facilities, and Brooklyn Community District 5 is identified as having an open space ratio of 1.3 acres of open space per 1,000 residents. Green Gems Community Garden is located on Block 4191, encompasses 13 lots on the northern-east intersection between Fontaine and Glamour Avenues. The total area of the garden is 19,900 square feet, and it has been used as a garden since 1994. The city-owned lots that are about the development site are shaded in green. The total frontage of the garden along Fontaine Avenue is 135 feet and 180 feet on Glamour Avenue. The development site is located in 151 Fontaine Avenue and is currently functions as part of the garden. The total area is 2,500 feet with 25 feet of frontage on Fontaine Avenue. The proposed use of the development site is to formally be added to the adjacent Green Gems Community Garden, and it will be licensed through Parks Green Zone Program jointly with the rest of the lots of the garden. with the rest of the lots of the garden. This project was certified May 20th of this year. Community Board 5 did not hold a meeting to discuss the project. The Brooklyn Borough President held a meeting in July 2nd and approved this application. The CPC public hearing for this application is scheduled for next Wednesday, September 11th.
Any questions from the commission? Vice Chair Knuckles.
Does the acquisition by the Department of Parks mean that this parcel becomes park land, or are they just the manager of the property going forward? How does that work?
To my knowledge, it's only to have all the lots that encompass the garden as city property, but I don't have information about if this is going to be mapped as park. I will relay to the applicant to explain that on Wednesday.
Yeah, it's not being mapped as parkland, but it may qualify as park use, and I think Parks should clarify how this is treated. Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Item 6, Page 122, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn, Community District 12. Our presenter is Amrita Mahesh.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone an R6 C13 district to a C42 district to facilitate the legalization of an existing three-story, approximately 3,890 square foot, commercial building in the Sunset Park neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 12. The project site is located in the southeastern portion of Sunset Park, near the borders of Borough Park and Decker Heights neighborhoods. The project site is located along 8th Avenue between 60th and 61st Streets. The surrounding area includes a mix of multifamily buildings and row houses along mid-block portions. Immediately to the south, there is an M11 zoning district that contains a mix of parking, commercial, industrial, and auto-oriented uses. The project site is well-served by public transit, including bus and subway service. As the commission may recall, 8th Avenue is a thriving corridor that consists of predominantly three-story commercial and mixed-use buildings. 8th Avenue is lined with businesses, grocery stores, restaurants, and community organizations, and is often referred to as an extension of Chinatown in Manhattan. The project block is mapped with R6 and R6 C13 districts on the northern portion and an M11 district on the southern portion. The proposed development site is an interior lot improved with a three-story building and is currently occupied entirely with commercial uses. Other lots within the proposed rezoning area with a frontage on 8th Avenue also consist of three-story buildings with a mix of uses that include stores, a nonprofit, offices, and dwelling units. Lots along 60th Street within the proposed rezoning area consist of two recently constructed six-to-seven-story commercial, community facility, and mixed-use buildings, and a two-story building on 60th Street. As the commission may recall, the three-story, approximately 3,890 square foot, building located on the project site exceeds the maximum permitted as a right floor area for commercial uses, which is 3,200 square feet or 2.0 FAR. The certificate of occupancies for a mixed-use building with commercial on the ground floor and dwelling units on the second and third floors. The applicant is seeking this zoning amendment in part to legalize the upper two floors. The applicant proposes to rezone the project area from an R6 C13 zoning district to a C42 zoning district to facilitate the legalization of the applicant property. C42 districts permit a maximum commercial FAR of 3.4, a residential FAR of 3.0, and a community facility FAR of 4.8. The C42 district has an R6 residential equivalent consistent with the existing zoning. The proposed boundary is 150 feet in depth and would replace the existing commercial overlay. The proposed zoning change will allow the existing commercial and mixed-use buildings, both on 8th Avenue and on 60th Street, within the proposed project area, to remain as they currently exist, but with the potential for additional commercial floor area. The proposed zoning change would also allow for a broader range of uses to be permitted as a right. The applicant believes that such a change would be in line with the surrounding neighborhood as the buildings that face 8th Avenue, particularly those north of 60th Street, are almost entirely three-story commercial and mixed-use buildings. The applicant also believes that the proposed zoning would accommodate for additional commercial capacity to bolster 8th Avenue, a well-established commercial corridor. This application was certified on May 20th, 2019. On June 18th, Brooklyn Community Board 12 held a public hearing and submitted a recommendation to approve the application. And on July 2nd, 2019, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing and submitted a recommendation to approve the application. At certification, there were questions from the commission to the department regarding the number of residential units within the project area and the presence of any rent-regulated units. The department believes that there are approximately 14 residential units within the project area, and the department also found that no addresses within the project area were listed in the rent guidelines board database and the New York State rent-regulated building search database as well. There was also a question from the commission to the department regarding the prevalence of buildings with multiple floors of commercial and community facility uses. The department staff conducted a preliminary survey of an approximately six-block area along 8th Avenue and found that there is a strong commercial presence on upper floors, on multiple buildings along the corridor, as well as numerous community facility uses on upper floors. That concludes my presentation.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, maybe this is a preview of a question for the applicant, but how did this work, how did the conversion work come to happen? Did they have DOB permits for the conversion of the residential units to?
The applicant has stated that they bought the building vacant, and because they believed that commercial was the highest and best use, given the context, they went ahead and converted the building and approached DOB for the change. And DOB had flagged the project, that's how they came to us, but we can relay this concern, and the applicant will be able to respond at the public hearing.
Yeah, if they could tell us the history of how this came to be and how it came to light and why they were seeking legalization at this point, that would be great. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll see this at a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item 7, Page 141, is a pre-hearing review of site selections, acquisitions, and disposition of city-owned properties in Brooklyn, Community Districts 13 and 15; Queens, Community Districts 10 and 14; and Staten Island, Community Districts 2 and 3. Brendan Pilar will kick off our team presentation.
Good afternoon, commissioners. HPD, along with co-applicants, DCAST, Parks, and DEP, are seeking approval of site selection, acquisition, and disposition of 141 tax lots to facilitate the construction of resilient housing or open space. The purpose of this project is to facilitate this responsible future use of these sites as either new housing designed to flood-resistant construction standards or as open space. And the project sites are located in the boroughs of Brooklyn, Queens, and Staten So the city is using part of its HUD disaster recovery grant funding to support recovery from Hurricane Sandy in the form of building resilient housing that could withstand the challenges of climate change. The Build It Back program is funded by $2.2 billion in this HUD disaster recovery funding and overseen by the Mayor's Office of Recovery as well as HPD. The program offered homeowners five pathways for participation in this voluntary program, a small percentage participated in the acquisitions and buyouts program, and that is the only program that requires the actions that are in front of the commission. The Build It Back program itself served 12,000 households in 1-4 family residences and nearly 20,000 households in multifamily residences. As I mentioned, a small percentage of the participants in the Build It Back program opted for the acquisition or buyout program, comprised less than 2% of all program participants found their way into this pathway. But pursuant to federal guidelines, HPD, in consultation with other agencies, including the Department of City Planning, performed a technical assessment to determine which pathway, whether acquisition or buyout, would be appropriate. And the pathway considerations were informed by both site-specific and area-specific conditions, including access to sewer and street infrastructure, as well as established neighborhood plans for infrastructure and land use. HPD is the agency managing the program, and they procured a subrecipient called Project Rebuild Incorporated to use the disaster recovery funds to purchase the properties, remove the damaged structures, and hold the properties until plans are developed for their future resilient end use. The sites were assigned one of two pathways. The first sites are in an acquisition pathway that are slated for resilient one or two-family residences, and these residences would be developed either through private auction or through HPD's affordable housing program called Open Door. The other pathway, the buyout pathway, these sites are slated for open space, either to be maintained by another public agency or as open space to be used by an adjacent property owner as a yard expansion. For both pathways, deed restrictions will be used to enforce the end use of the property. The purpose of the actions in front of the commission are to allow the city to acquire properties if they fail to meet the program's requirements and dispose them again with deed restrictions. Now, in order for the city to comply with the disaster recovery grant requirements, there are limitations on the future use of all lots participating in this program. Resilient housing lots, or the acquisition for redevelopment sites I just described, they must be elevated flood-compliant housing structures with mandatory flood insurance requirements and with a specified timeframe for redevelopment, that's three years. If the requirements are not met, the city could seek to acquire the lots. Open space lots, or buyout lots, are restricted to use as open space in perpetuity. No impermeable surfaces or new structures are permitted other than flood-control structures or restrooms or other facilities tied to the open space. If the requirements are not met on the buyout lots, the city could seek to acquire the lots. The disaster recovery grant program requires the enforcement and recapture of properties if future owners of the lots purchase through the program that do not comply with the program's requirements. As I mentioned, the sites are located in three boroughs. There are different actions applying to different sites depending on the identified end uses of the sites. My colleague Katie will walk you through an overview of the sites as well as the responses that we heard during the public review process.
All right. Good afternoon. Katie Ferrara, DCP's Brooklyn office. I'll note, I'm also here with my colleagues from the Queens and Staten Island offices. I'm going to walk through the actions proposed across the three boroughs. Starting in Brooklyn, there are 13 lots across four neighborhoods in the program. All are in southern Brooklyn, Community Districts 13 and 15. In Brooklyn, all 13 lots have been designated for housing redevelopment. And HPD is proposing that four of those lots be redeveloped through their managed redevelopment pipeline, meaning that they'll be in an affordable homeownership program. And nine lots will be made available for home construction by private auction. All of the sites are proposed to be one-to-two family homes, limited to one-to-two family homes, and there's no sites in Brooklyn for open space programs. And as Brendan explained, all actions on the sites here are for the city's right to acquire and dispose of the lots if and when needed. In Queens, the proposed actions would facilitate future use of 74 lots through southern Queens across neighborhoods and community districts 10 and 14. There are 11 resilient housing lots in Queens, eight of which are proposed for the affordable managed redevelopment pipeline, and three of which are designated for private auction. 63 lots in Queens are proposed for open space. That's 41 open space lots intended for city ownership under either Parks or DCAST jurisdiction, with the remaining 22 open space lots for private use through the yard expansion program. In Staten Island, the proposed actions would facilitate future use of 54 lots across neighborhoods and community districts 2 and 3. That's 12 lots in Staten Island proposed for open space. They're all intended for city ownership under Parks, DEP, or DCAST jurisdiction. And 42 lots in Staten Island are proposed for housing. That's 26 proposed for affordable housing through managed redevelopment, and 16 intended for private auction. The proposed actions were reviewed this summer by six community boards, three borough presidents, and one borough board. Outcomes included recommendations for approval and approval with modifications, and I'll walk through each. In Brooklyn, Community Board 15 voted to approve the application with no modifications. And Brooklyn Community Board 13 voted to approve the actions under the conditions that the future owners of lots in the Seagate neighborhood are informed of the neighborhood's rules and regulations. The Brooklyn Borough President recommended approval with modifications, asking first that HPD assure housing affordability in perpetuity and place the Seagate properties in their managed redevelopment pipeline. We understand that HPD reviewed all housing sites to determine whether they met criteria for affordable housing programs, and the Seagate lots would not qualify in part because there's homeowners' fees associated with that neighborhood, which HPD cannot regulate. The borough president also asked for a guarantee that new development comply with zoning and building code for new construction and flood hazard areas, and we would note that since all housing sites will be delivered vacant and will need to seek new construction permits, they will meet all resiliency-related zoning and Appendix G requirements, including elevation. In Queens, Community Board 10 voted to approve the application with the conditions that there be enforcement of the maintenance of each property. Queens Community Board 14 voted to approve the application with the condition that the seven lots designated for housing managed redevelopment in that district, that's out of a total of 43 lots in Community District 14, be discussed with the community board. And it's our understanding that the nature of that recommendation is around having those lots transferred from the affordable homeownership pipeline to the market rate auction. The Queens Borough Board and Borough President each recommended that open space properties be properly maintained and remain open in perpetuity, and that Community Board 14 be consulted on the terms of the lots in their district. In Staten Island, both Community Boards 2 and 3 voted in favor of the application, and the Borough President issued a favorable recommendation. In summary, HPD, DCAST, DEP, and Parks are requesting this series of acquisition, site selection, and disposition approvals in order to comply with HUD requirements for the Build It Back program and facilitate resilient redevelopment and land use of 141 lots across three boroughs. The applicant provided memo to the CPC responding to program-related questions that came up from the commission at certification. You should have that. And the agencies will be here on Wednesday for a public hearing on these items. Thank you.
Katie, could you go back to the slide for the Queens? No, that's one.
Recommendations, yeah.
Yeah, the recommendations. I'll just note, it's a little bit confusing. The recommendation from the community board is that seven sites have been identified by HPD to be redeveloped for affordable homeownership, and the community board has not wanted that to happen. They would prefer that they be redeveloped as market rate units. This is the same community board that was recently before us in the context of Peninsula Hospital and had similar concerns about affordable units. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Marine.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question relative to the zoning of some of these properties. I mean, as you know, this body approved some zoning, I guess, considerations based on the fact that some of these were bungalows and didn't have the appropriate side yards or rear yards. How are we matching the two, knowing that there was a five-year approval on that application? And then, of course, these homes that are being sold for redevelopment and their conformance with zoning?
Sure. So, right now, the zoning resolution has temporary emergency rules on the books to facilitate recovery from Hurricane Sandy, and those were actions that the commission approved in 2013 and 2015. And some of those rule changes would help buildings, help facilitate the construction of flood-resilient buildings on narrow or otherwise irregular lots, essentially reducing side yard requirements in exchange for slightly shorter buildings so they are not kind of overwhelming the local neighborhood context with these tall, slender buildings. Those are rules that are currently in place. They're in place for another two years. The Department of City Planning, right now, is looking to certify permanent zoning text regulations for the floodplain that will include similar provisions, but also build on the lessons learned that we've learned over the past six years. Saints Hurricane Sandy, we've been engaging communities across the floodplain and hope to... to bring a suite of actions to the commission sometime this fall.
Thank you, Brendan. I appreciate that.
We have, for the past few years, been doing an incredible amount of outreach, community by community basis, getting feedback about how our temporary rules have worked, where they could be modified. And when do you anticipate that will be coming back? Later this fall, right?
Later this fall, that's right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Thanks. So, I understand the rationale for acquiring these properties and turning them into open space, vacant lots and so on. I don't fully understand the rationale for acquiring lots that are in areas prone to flooding. I think about Broad Channel, for example, where people live at risk, at their own peril. But acquiring those lots, then using taxpayer money to redevelop them as affordable housing, only for the next storm to wipe them out, and presumably another Build It Back program comes in with more taxpayer money to fix them again. Why wouldn't you take all of these lots and take them off and put them into open space?
So, specifically, the lots in Broad Channel, none of them are slated for housing redevelopment. They are all slated for yard expansion programs, so they will be kept open.
I didn't understand the disposition of the...
Sure. But I think it's important to note that when selecting a pathway for these sites, in consultation with City Planning, HPD looked at broader neighborhood plans and flood vulnerability. And in the neighborhoods that are experiencing extreme flood vulnerability, like Broad Channel or Hamilton Beach in Queens, those are not areas where the program is targeting new housing development. So, on a spectrum of vulnerability in the city, you have areas that are vulnerable to big coastal storm events, that's 800,000 people across the city's floodplain, which also have areas that are vulnerable to tidal flooding today and increasingly, with sea level rise, increasingly so in the future. Those are areas that zoning is already restricting new development, limiting it to single-family detached residences, and also areas where this program is not seeking to build new housing.
But aren't they all vulnerable by definition? I mean, they wouldn't be in the program if they weren't vulnerable, right?
Again, there are levels of vulnerability, and we really do look on both a citywide and neighborhood basis when assigning zoning and code regulations to areas to ensure that the vulnerability is reflected in the buildings that would be allowed in the future.
It wasn't balancing in that we have not, as a city, made a policy determination to retreat from any area subject to flooding?
That's what I'm driving at, really. I mean, I think that policy debate ought to happen, and we seem to be continuing to put taxpayer money into areas that are questionable at best, and one wonders why there isn't a broader discussion about that policy.
The other thing that I'll note is that in some areas, what would be allowed under current zoning is more than the single-family. And so, this was a determination that, as a condition of the disposition, without changing the zoning, it would be restricted to the single-family residential. Commissioner Deloos.
On Wednesday, when we have the hearing, it'd be helpful to hear from HPD a little bit more about the affordability levels that they're anticipating. Obviously, I believe the Borough President's recommendation asks for permanent affordability. I know that's more challenging on homeownership projects, but if he could, if they could speak to that, what they anticipate the RFP process to be. And then, just based on this conversation, maybe a little bit more about the criteria that was used for selection of sites. In particular, which ones were chosen? I'd be interested which ones were chosen for affordable redevelopment versus the private auction, for instance.
Other questions? Commissioner Cirillo.
Katie, could you do me a favor? Could you go back to the slide on the, not the recommendations, but the sort of the data slide on the Staten Island sites? Because the numbers, maybe you just went by so quickly. The numbers I didn't think matched up. I just want to make sure. So, there were 54 lots, which those numbers in 2 and 3 match up. And then, 12 will be open-space lots. And then, okay, I see 42. And then, the number 36 is a breakdown. Okay, I got it. I got it. Okay, 36 and 6. Okay, that's how the numbers... So, let me ask you a question. On the expansion of the yard sites, is that in neighboring? I mean, is it the neighbor that's...
Sure.
The person just by geography?
So, the yard expansion program is only being offered in the neighborhood of Broad Channel in Queens. And it would apply to adjacent or adjoining neighbors. So, as long as you touch the property, it can't be located across the street, but as long as you touch the property...
Got it.
...it can be applied for yard expansion.
Okay. And the only area that it's in Queens is that's exercising that option?
Correct.
Okay, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? We'll see you at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Staff have prepared reports to be considered on Wednesday, September 11th, for the following. 11:55, 11:57, Commerce Avenue. Terrence Cardinal Cook. 363 Lafayette Street. Vernon Boulevard Broadway rezoning. 38th Street, 35th Avenue rezoning. 13024 South Conduit Avenue Self-Storage Special Permit. 9105 Beach Channel Drive. 11206 71st Road rezoning. 1533 Clintonville Street Commercial Overlay rezoning. La Frac City Parking Garage, special permit. The FDNY EMS Station 49. And the Whitlock Avenue Blue Belt. For post-hearing follow-up, 1247 Atlantic Avenue Pool, there was a letter and an image in your package. I'm seeing nodding heads, no questions on that, all right? 101 Fleet Place rezoning, leave, do we have the Brooklyn office here to discuss this? Or we... This is one we're, this is, this one we will be discussing on Wednesday and not today. There was some work that the staff wanted to do before coming back. 25 Central Park West. That's 419. Yeah, go ahead. Sylvia is here to discuss.
Just a quick follow-up to get back to the commission's discussion with regards to the feasibility of incorporating MTA elevator access into the proposed development, under the commission's consideration for a landmark preservation special permit in Soho at 419 Broadway. So, staff looked into it and had conversations with the MTA during the review process. And would like to note that, given the nearby ADA accessible stations in the surrounding area, as well as on the same subway line, the Canal Street NQR Station by the project site is unlikely to be an MTA priority for ADA capital upgrade. Specifically, there is an ADA accessible station two blocks away, Canal Street, the JZ Station. And along the same line, the closest accessible station is two stops to the south at Courtland. And there is one ADA accessible station to the north on one express stop away at Union Square. And I've also spoken with my colleagues at the Transportation Division within City Planning and took away the understanding that the development site and the project, given the small scale, a small size of the project site, as well as the scale, modest scale of the project, doesn't lend itself to be a feasible site to take on such an infrastructure investment. That being said, as Marissa has alluded to in previous review sessions, we will certainly continue to identify proactively opportunities as best we can to support MTA upgrades as part of our planning work. That's it.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. We really went back and kicked the tires.
So, also, for post-hearing follow-up, the Northern Manhattan Equities 3, there was something in there, there was, there was some responses in your package. I'm seeing nodding heads, no questions. Okay. And the La Hermosa, Annie White is here to discuss.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. So, I am here to discuss the La Hermosa project that is in its post-hearing review. As a quick reminder, this applicant is the La Hermosa Christian Church, and it owns the property at 5 West 110th Street, and it's seeking for zoning actions to facilitate a development, a zoning map amendment from an R8-R72 site with a C14 overlay to C19, zoning text amendment to map MIH, and two zoning special permits to waive certain bulk requirements. So, the applicant has addressed the following, some concerns that were raised at the public hearing that I've put in these broad categories. They're also explained in a letter that was attached to the, that you should have received in your Friday package. I'll start by going through some modifications to the bulk that respond to some of the concerns about the building design. So, the, some of the concerns that were raised by the commission were regarding the overall massing, the sheer wall along Fifth Avenue, kind of its design and ground floor activation, tower articulation, and overall height. So, now I'll go through a series of slides that you also should have received that show the previous proposal and then a modified proposal, and I've highlighted some of those changes. So, here you see the previous proposal elevation at the building height, not including the bulkhead at 398, in its relation to the Schaumburg Towers and the Cinderella Verde project a block away. The building, overall building bulk has been modified and its height reduced to 363, about a 35-foot height waiver or height reduction, but there's also been modifications to the bulk. So, there's been a, at the top of the tower along Fifth Avenue, that there's been that setback near the top to further respond to the height of the Schaumburg Towers. There's also an extension of the base along Fifth Avenue with a setback, so it has the 72-foot-high base height now with a setback, which is in line with the as-of-right kind of bulk requirements for the base height. Now, I'll go through, kind of toggle through some series of views to further illustrate those changes. Here's the previous proposal, looking as if you were looking across the circle, and the reduction, so just once more, previous. And you can see the reduction in height and articulation at the top of the tower, along with the extension of the base height at the bottom of the, of the property along Fifth Avenue. And just a slightly different angle, that you can see more of that base height change down at the bottom there. Then again, just the removal and extension of the base height. One more view that shows more of a pedestrian-level view, where they've extended to complete that corner along, at that 72-foot base. And just one more, and you can see they've slightly extended that, the massing of the church there and the 72-foot base height. Sure, sure.
Pushing the base out to the property lawn, will they have to help by 10 feet?
Yeah, previously, they had the, this kind of, the 10-foot setback that created a sheer wall condition. That was one of the waivers that they were seeking, to give a more generous sidewalk there, but their modified is removing that 10-foot setback at the sidewalk and created a, as-of-right condition at the base height.
Do we know what happens in that base?
Yeah, so, this is going to be, the, the ground floor is the residential lobby with some of the church lobby extension, so most of the square footage that is being extended is lobby space, along with some of the church space, as well as very little of the residential unit expansion.
Is there any transparency in that, or do we simply have a blank wall that's closer to the street?
I would have, they didn't, you know, because of the quick turnaround, they didn't do a full rendered image. I believe that there was transparency, I'm sorry, I was flipping back, going back to the rendering, the more flesh-out renderings that were shown at the pre-hearing review. I believe there is transparency, but I can revisit those.
Yeah, because otherwise, we're not addressing the condition that caused the concern.
Do we even know that this architect will still be the architect when they select a developer?
So, I do know that they responded to the developer selection process, and they also wanted to clarify that they've entered into an agreement with the architect, and there is, you know, an agreement with them to see the design throughout the process, and that there would be, there would need to be further action if, once the developer is selected, if they need to drop the architect, that would be a process to do so. So, I'm happy to, before I get into the, we kind of jumped ahead to the developer selection, I'm happy to answer more questions now about the bulk or continue on.
I would like to note that we appreciate that the church has come back with some modifications, but I'm struck by the fact that the church is asking us to do four things. One is to map MIH, which I don't see as being at all controversial. The second is to extend a C19 district across the street. The C19 is the zoning pursuant to which Schaumburg Towers were built. But then, perhaps the most consequential is the special permit that fundamentally changes the shape of the building. And we, as a department, have long had concerns about having the church be the low-scale frontage on the corner, a corner that we think is a very significant civic presence, being right there anchoring the northeastern end of Central Park. The other ramification of the low-scale standalone church is that so much bulk is being put on the footprint of the residential tower. Floor area that were able to be distributed across the entirety of the site would give a lot more flexibility for what we think would be better urban design. And so, I am certainly open to a discussion with the applicant about undertaking a significant upzoning to C19, which the department believes is appropriate, but not granting the special permit, because it is the special permit that is granting the waivers that lead to the design that gives us significant pause. And with that, I'll toss it up, Commissioner Marine.
I just, I want to make an observation. I know the church, part of the premise of having the standalone building was because of the experiences of, of their experiences and other churches where they're relegated to the first floor and the basement. But in this instance, it's obvious that they're not being relegated to the first floor and basement. It still affords the opportunity to build bulk on top of the church. So, they're still in control, they would still have a presence on the circle, and I agree with you, it would make a better building.
Commissioner Edie.
So, just to make sure I understand, is the thought then that if they're able to distribute the bulk over a broader footprint, that the building height would be brought down?
The C19 doesn't have height limits. It's just there could be more significant setbacks, there could just be a better development of the building. I know a number of us expressed concerns about both the sheer wall rising from Fifth Avenue. The architects have, the applicant has come back with a modest setback, but without the special permit, I believe even more setbacks would be required, more sculpting of the building would be required. Other questions? Okay. We will be coming back on Wednesday for a further discussion of this, as we're in continued discussions with the applicant. Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
The vote is 10:15?
No, the vote is on September 25th. Yeah. So, we will be able to discuss it on Wednesday at our special review session, and then, again, on the 23rd of September at a normal review session for a vote on the 25th. The time clock doesn't run out until a number of weeks afterwards, but because of our schedule, that is the last public hearing at which we would be able to vote.
I did have a summary of kind of the four other items that were addressed in the letter, but if there's, if there's comfort with that, I'm happy to move on. But, okay, okay, thank you.
Before we go, could I ask one more C19 question? When it comes back to us, will you be able to help us visualize what a rezoning without the special permits might look like?
We're working on it as we are meeting here today. Okay, thank you.
Counter observation, we do have a meeting on the 15th, so we can...
I'm going to double-check the clock that's being shown on the agenda. I think that there might, that there, I believe that this was 10:08 is actually the deadline.
Yeah, I believe it's the 8th.
And so, I think there was a misprint in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, on to the music.
Okay. As explained in the letter, La Hermosa has entered into a MOU earlier this year, I believe in July, with the Manhattan School of Music, which is a, you know, statement of good faith to develop the music school that will... to develop a music school that will offer the free music classes and programming to the community, specifically young people of Harlem. And they wanted to note that they developed this concept not as just a way to further activate their space, but in direct, you know, direct response to Community Board's 10 Statement of Community District Needs, which highlighted the need for performing arts space in youth, youth programming. And in that letter, they also describe how, or in the MOU that was attached to the letter, they described how La Hermosa is establishing the endowment fund from the future transaction with the developer that would fund the Manhattan School of Music, and Manhattan School of Music would be the, you know, they would create the program and operate that performance program in the space. To move on to kind of the overall concerns about the developer process, I think La Hermosa spoke a lot at the hearing and also in their letter about their intention to kind of control the process through entering into the U-LR without the developer, but notes that they will undertake a competitive selection process to select that appropriate developer partner and will enter into a development agreement and ground lease, which will be enforceable mechanisms to structure that development relationship. I also kind of further pressed them to, I believe there's a question about the criteria that they will use, so I wanted to get back to you all that they, you know, will certainly look for experience, both completing complex projects in New York City, looking specifically at a minimum of three completed projects over $100 million, and part, and experience of partnering with educational, cultural, or religious institutions in New York City. They would look for a partner that has a positive track record with working in the community board and with the local neighbors. Also someone who would have affordable housing experience, as a large portion of this will be MIH development, and will be able to subcontract with a reputable and experienced administering agent. And additional note that I'll just reiterate is that they've also entered into this agreement with the architect to design the project through the final stages. There was a question about the current deed restriction that's on the property. So there was a deed recorded in 1977, which includes a clause that requires the property to be used for and related to the Christian Church congregation. So La Hermosa has been, continued to work closely with the holders of that restrictive right, which is this American Christian Missionary Society of New York and the Board of Church Extension Disciples of Christ. So they have both been involved in the current rezoning plan and are, you know, in full support of the rezoning plan and have said that they will modify that deed in, prior to any future redevelopment. I also wanted to, there was questions about the Bethel Development Rights and how, you know, how the development rights were being transferred across the zoning lot, and then also that was further modified in this proposal. So this is a chart that outlines the, the lot area breaking, separating Bethel Site from the, what I'm calling the overall La Hermosa Development Site. As you can see, the previous floor area, they were getting up to 228,000 square feet of built floor on the total development site, and keeping 12,200 on the Bethel Site. That is including their existing building that's approximately 8,000 square feet, so there was around 3,800 feet of development rights for them to keep on the site to redevelop. So through this proposal, they have relocated some of the floor area to the base, as you saw, but they've also removed 10,000 square feet from the overall La Hermosa development, and that 10,000 square feet will remain on the Bethel Site.
Okay. Any questions?
That concludes my presentation, so.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Deloos.
On the Manhattan School of Music, I'm wondering, have we heard independently from the Manhattan School of Music at all? I'm trying, I'm trying to remember.
Testified.
They testified, right? Okay, we haven't received anything in writing, besides the testimony, we haven't.
We have the MOU.
Okay, then, then my concerns are addressed, thank you.
Okay, then we, yes, Commissioner Levin.
You know, I would say on the Manhattan School of Music site, you know, the notion of creating a not-for-profit, establishing an endowment, there's a whole lot of work to be done to make that part of the project real. It'd feel a lot better if there was some budget information, if we knew, you know, how that endowment, how that endowment is going to be used, what operating expenses are going to be going forward. I realize that it's very premature to be asking those questions. Nonetheless, we really, we're not going to get it at this stage, and it's inappropriate to ask for it, but to know that it's real requires a whole lot more work than we have available to us.
We noted that, that given that there isn't even a developer and the uncertain timeframes, I don't anticipate that we would get more than the statement of intentions in the MOU.
Yeah, I think we've had ample experience in this neighborhood, in this immediate vicinity, about the challenges of creating not-for-profit organizations from scratch and giving them real life.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yeah, what is the timeframe for the selection of the developer?
I don't want to misspeak, I'm not entirely sure. I know that, you know, it would, they stated that they're, you know, they would move quite quickly onto that process after the completion of the U-LR. I could ask more about the timeframe.
We'll see if we can find out anything more definitive by Wednesday. Other questions? Okay, then we'll see this at the special review session on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Right. For the East Side Coastal Resiliency Project, there was some materials left on the dais. Are there, you okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Plaza 48 in Queens Community District 1. 4401 Northern Boulevard rezoning, there were some materials in your package, yes, Commissioner Levin.
I just want to say, since I was the one who asked for it, we got a letter from the applicant explaining the land use rationale for the zoning they're seeking, and I thank them for that, and I'm satisfied with the answer.
Okay, good. The Peninsula Hospital redevelopment.
I have a quick question. Has there, I know at the time, both the Community Board and Borough President had raised concerns about the height and the density. Has there been any change to any of that, or have they reconsidered reducing the height or the number of units?
I will take that back to the Borough Office, and we'll get an answer to you, either, either offline or maybe perhaps on, on a review session.
Thank you.
And last but not least, the Bronx Special District Text Update, Jutan Horstman is here to discuss.
Good afternoon. So I'll be presenting the update and following through from what we've heard from testimony. I'll be summarizing the comments, as well as providing some proposed text changes, and walking through the tools and guides that we're going for next steps. So the first thing is to, we've heard a lot of testimony from, after the public hearing and written testimony, and there were a number of concerns that we heard, kind of categorizing those concerns with Department of Buildings regarding enforcement of as-of-right regulations and the capacity of the Department of Buildings to review these kind of natural resource applications in the future. Wanting to retain Community Board for public engagement and oversight, people really want an opportunity for the public conversation. This is something that Councilman Cohen also stated during his testimony. And then there's a perception by some that the proposal is pro-development and anti-preservation. There was a letter-writing campaign by the Bronx Council for Environmental Quality. We received a number of correspondence, and a lot of it had this, and we need to address that in this, today. And also that there are a number of people that felt that the proposal was tailored more for Staten Island rather than it would be for the Bronx. So I'm going to, in this presentation, discuss the Community Board component and then the perception piece. The portion regarding Department of Buildings, we're actually working in real time with Department of Buildings, so I'll be following up on a lot of that piece on Wednesday at the review session. So regarding the positives from the public hearing as well, and written testimony, really coming down to, like, there's better ecological science, that this holistic approach with connectivity to natural resources is really a smarter approach for the framework that provides a, really, better regulations resulting in these better environmental outcomes. The current regulation, or the current rules also have a number of issues, one of which we've heard was there's a significant time and cost expense for homeowners who are seeking very modest changes. We've had written testimony of someone that cost them $25,000 to just go through this process, other testimonies saying that the process can actually cost more than the actual work itself. And then, so essentially, stream, support for streamlining the process is something that we have heard as well. So to give a little background on the actual number of violations and complaints to give a little context to some of the issues that we've heard, in the past 11 years, there's been a total of eight violations that have been recorded, which is averaging less than one per year. There's been seven complaints to the Department of Buildings in this 11-year period for legal tree removal or topographic modification, and it resulted in three violations. During the same period of time, there were five natural area district violations, which resulted in restoration applications. So these eight applications are about, to kind of put it in context, about as many applications as we actually see for natural area approvals every year, kind of on average. So during this 11-year period, we've seen somewhere in the range of 70, 75 applications. So while there have been some violations, it's been relatively few in comparison to the approval and the people going through the process. So addressing concerns that the proposal is pro-development and anti-preservation, there's actually a table and some correspondence in your packages with a little more detail on this, I might kind of walk through some of the high level and the approach. So the proposal does not actually increase the development potential, there's no new floor area being created here, and really, it gives greater protection to the natural area district as we see it. The proposal would provide stricter regulations for things like rock-out cropping, giving tree, tree credit systems, greater value for old-growth trees, creating lot coverage limits, and providing, which will create a value for steep slopes. There additionally would be new regulations to better meet the goals of the special district. This would include hard-surface area limits, where hard-surface areas aren't even regulated today under the current rules, new tree protections, such as those with structural root zones, required front yard plantings, protected rear yard trees, a new biodiversity requirement, which would actually be much more in line and match the Riverdale character of the existing context, a new option for campus plans, which would allow a much more holistic approach to preservation, as well as habitat preservation areas, where residential, for large sites over one acre, would be required to provide, preserve up to 25% of residential area, and institutions or community cell uses would have to provide 50%, where there'd be a 35% habitat preservation area and 15% open space requirement for these. This would create strict limits, rather than allowing for discretionary approvals of every action, and we would really vest a lot of our best practices today, where there's no limits, it would then create this, regulations for hard-surface areas and lot coverages where people would know what can be built and what those limits are within the area, and it would create a lot more open space preservation. And those are all things that we have heard, the support for those rules. Additionally, there would be much greater protection for subdivisions. Currently, it's a sub certification, it would be actually moved to an authorization for these large and sensitive sites. That would mean that it would give city planning and the Commission more leverage to negotiate, and for these large sites over one acre, they would be required to provide a habitat preservation area. This would ensure that people essentially can't subdivide out of protection of natural features, which is something that we have seen today in the current rules, which is one of the issues that we're trying to solve for. This is something we also heard from the Community Board as a request, as well as public testimony, that this is something that we really need to fix, is the subdivision piece. And then all sites must comply with the special district regulations, including those that are filing directly with the Department of Buildings. So regardless of how you are going through the process, through their discretionary process or the filing directly to DOB, you would still have to comply with the rules. This includes sites under 10,000 square feet, which today are essentially exempt, with a few exceptions. It really gets to some, the, one of the goals of balancing preservation and development by requiring compliance with the rules.
I'll note that Jutan went through this in such detail because we believe that the allegations that this was pro-development are misguided, and also some of the statements in the letter-writing campaign were just belied by the facts.
So the next piece is the, the proposed text changes. So we've actually heard a lot, a lot during public review, and we thought about how we could be, and while we're thinking about how we could be responsive, we also identified some of these core goals that need to be maintained to ensure the integrity of the proposal. So the first being the preservation of the strict as-of-right regulations for preservation of natural features for the better environmental outcomes, focusing discretionary review where there are choices to be made, essentially on subdivisions, campuses, large sites, and those sites that are sensitive that we've identified. Maintain the proposal's simpler process for homeowners, especially in this community, we typically see a lot of site alterations and enlargements, site alterations where people are looking to put in pedos, decks, pools, or enlargements where people are expanding their home because their families, expanding, new bedroom, additional change to the kitchen, or maybe a new garage, those are very typical for what we see today under the current. So kind of with that in mind, we're making the following recommendations for the City Planning Commission modifications. So we've heard consistently from testimony that the community wants to remain engaged. So for applications that are filing directly with the Department of Buildings, we're proposing the following text change. And this text would require applicants to share, Department, to share the special district application with the Community Board in advance of any filing. This would allow for increased awareness of what's being filed, so neighbors, the community, everyone has the information. It provides a public notice, by providing a public notice, facilitates discussion of the special district plans, and it really offers a simpler process to homeowners, really kind of maintaining one of those core goals that we've established. So for applications that are going through this discretionary approval process, we'd maintain the current public referral process for those authorizations and the one special permit that's in there for modifying habitat preservation area, if that ever comes up. So all projects would have the opportunity for public awareness and discussion. This is actually as much or more so than we're doing today, where sites under 10,000 square feet, or if you're a certification for subdivisions or the modification that no authorization's needed, would be able to go directly to the Department of Buildings once that's received, under today's rules. This actually kind of results, this could result in new buildings, that could forego the public review process, and we've actually seen this in several cases where someone built on the hard-surface area, so there was no actual impact on the natural features, and then they filed directly with the Department of Buildings, and there was some concern. So this would again allow for that opportunity for that discussion with this proposed text change. And we think this is a really important piece that gets to a lot of the discussion that we have heard through this, through all the testimony. So the next couple pieces are, so the first is, there are several regulations in the text and cleaning up some of the language. We've heard comments from the public asking for clarity on some of the aspects within the text, as well as when we were working with Department of Buildings, that they asked for clarity on several pieces. So really, like, as an example, there are some places where we're asking for application material and specifying what needs to be submitted specifically by a registered design professional, for example. So it's adding that level of clarity for what is needed at certain times, as well as several other places in the text. As well as removing, sorry, I advanced it, there we go, removing an applicable language. There were several holdover pieces from the ATEX that we removed, which are Staten Island specific. And then getting into the actual, some of the other changes. So the first is for sites within 15 feet of a building, changing the language so that sites could have minor enlargements or alterations, or for buildings that are seeking minor enlargements or alterations. We heard that the current proposal asks for, allows for too much, and we are proposing that it be changed from disturbance area to hard-surface area. And really what this does, it gets to the intent. So would this minor addition, this is for the large sites, and it would allow buildings to become ADA compliant, meet their building code, allow for additional egresses, or minor things such as adding HVAC, where, you know, those are technically site alterations, where they would be able to have these minor additions or changes in order to meet building codes.
I'll note that in the current text, it allows a certain square footage, and here we went back in response to the comments we heard and limited the uses to uses that served this public value of a second means of egress or ADA accessibility.
The next one is something else that we heard on a specific comments, our changes would permit an elevated building to extend over a critical root zone and not be counted as a disturbance. You can see here, kind of from this example, in the text, it allows this for patios and decks which are overhanging and over a critical root zone. This is expanding that to buildings or other structures, which makes sense when we're allowing it for patios and decks. allowing it for patios and decks. The next two changes are also in response to comments, the first being, respond to concerns about the increased tree and planting regulations being too onerous. And so by addressing this, we're permitting the biodiversity and tree credits and habitat preservation area, so on these large sites, to be able to be counted towards a portion of the requirements for the lot. This really does allow for this balance of the preservation with the requirements. It still gets to the goal, the core goal, of not putting all the trees in one area, but requiring them across the entire site, and allowing for the tree plant, the planting areas to be counted on these lots when they end up having them all kind of on one single lot for habitat preservation area. So again, it kind of meets the core goal of what we're trying to accomplish with these habitat preservation areas. So it was, the next one is allowing a combination of bulk modifications on plan review sites. This is also in response to comments that people wanted to have a setback from natural features as much as possible for the development. And so what this does is it allows for some additional flexibility of these site plans. So this is something that is, again, a discretionary site plan because these are on plan review sites, and it really, there's limits on these modifications, but it allows them to be combined in order to ensure the preservation of natural features. Again, when you're thinking about like these larger lots, you may have preservation areas in the middle of them or on the side, so by having that flexibility to move the development around within that lot, it allows for the most preservation. And with this being discretionary and having these specific findings about preserving those natural features, we think that this is an appropriate modification.
So Jutun, these are sites that would still be coming before the planning commission?
Correct, yes. And they would go through public review as well.
Right, through the full ULR.
So, and then the final one is recommendation, really to support safety. So you have the Metro North Line on the westernmost portion of this community, and there's a number of institutions and homes and other things along it. And so we're excluding the height limits for retaining walls within 300 feet of a Metro North Railroad or within the, up to the first, or within the first street, whichever is first. This is really safety condition with these special conditions, and we want to ensure that there's no problems with having restrictions on retaining walls within this limited area. So the next piece is tools.
If I could actually, before Jutun goes on, I know that these are highly technical, but we are presenting them, one, because we're proposing them as changes, but also to show that we pored through the public comment that was here and looked for areas where we could address public comments in a way that met those three core principles. And we also have continued with discussions with some of the stakeholders who have been involved throughout the process. Commissioner Ramperchak.
Yeah, so I had a quick question about slide number nine with regards to in advance of filing, notifying the community boards or the board. Will the text specify how much timeframe they have to notify? Is it 30 days prior to filing? And when you say materials, you're referring to all plans and paperwork, like DOB paperwork that will be filed?
So it wouldn't be the full DOB plan set, but it would be everything applying to the natural area district set of plans. So there's specifics of what that would be. Regarding the timeframe, I think we're still working on kind of the final piece, which I think I can follow up on Wednesday, but yes, I think we're looking at identifying something that.
It would be a fixed period of days, and we also have an eye towards the community board's schedule so that they would have an adequate, a realistic amount of time to be able to discuss the application. Commissioner Levin.
And on that, by the way, I think it's a great modification, but the details are always important. The notice would go just to the community board or would it go to adjoining property owners as well?
We have it as the, just the community board. That was the idea.
And what happens if the community board doesn't like what it sees and discussions don't resolve it and the homeowner goes ahead and files with DOB? What kind of process does that unleash?
Well, I think that that's similar to some of the things that happen in today's process, where they're, they play an important role as an advisor to the commission, and they send their recommendation. And so, you know, they work with the homeowner in order to oftentimes get to that resolution before they submit a recommendation. So hopefully, those type of things can be resolved.
But I think to the commissioner's question, there is the process of appealing the issuance of a building permit.
That's what I was asking about. How does a DOB appeal work? And what kind of timeframe?
So in addition to this, there is other opportunity where someone could appeal through a ZD-1, for example, if they are doing an enlargement of certain things. So there is, there's a scope of that, a ZD-1 appeal, but.
That's an appeal of a DOB decision?
Correct.
Okay. This is geared at making sure that there is actual notice that DOB is going to be asked to issue a permit.
And I think it's important to remember that, you know, city planning is still here. We still get calls on things, and we will work with Department of Buildings throughout when we hear comments or concerns, and we can work with the commissioner.
But I think it's also good, good to know that the community will have, I mean, first off, they'll get notice, which should resolve many of these concerns and allow stuff to just happen as of right, which is, would be great. But that there is a process with DOB for neighbors or community board members to continue the conversation with a higher authority if they don't like what the applicant is proposing. I mean, I'm hoping that doesn't happen, but we need to have good process in place.
Yeah.
Commissioner Edie.
Well, who will, will DOB make sure that they've done the outreach beforehand? Who will police that?
We're working on the text to make it clear that you cannot file an application until, without providing evidence of the.
Yeah, right. That would be part of the application that DOB would be looking for.
We don't have the language in front of us, and this is another one where on Wednesday we anticipate having more information, but we thought that of the comments that we heard, this was perhaps the most significant and so wanted even at this concept phase, to share it with the commission to get your feedback as we look to finalize the proposal. Commissioner Capelli.
I'm not sure I understand this correctly. So if somebody has a piece of property and they want to put a little patio next to the house, this is going to go to the community board, who are going to make comments on them putting a patio on, in their yard?
I'll actually contrast it to what the situation is today. Today, in order to do that, you have to come through the full ULR process, and that is what has led to the testimony that we heard about paying $25,000 in fees for an addition that costs less than the processing. We are, we initially, the department proposed moving for these small, we're talking lots of under 10,000, and small additions, had proposed that it be as-of-right, go directly to the Buildings Department. We heard very significant concern that the community board wanted to continue to play its role in the ULR process. We are not proposing going back to ULR, but rather in response to very significant testimony and also the views of the council member, are proposing that there be a requirement before you file with DOB to notify the community board. And we're working on what the fixed number of days would be. One would hope that the community board receiving it, if it had concerns, would invite the applicant and that they would show up. The applicant, we have to be clear about this, would not be required to show up.
This is a notice provision.
It's a notice provision, but it means that the community board or members of the public who attend the community board meeting would have the opportunity to weigh in with DOB or file the appeal of the issuance of the building permit. What it does is it's striking the balance between lifting ULR while still providing realistic notice.
I'm not sure I'd describe it as a balance. I think perhaps the department was right in the first intent, and to involve people in matters so minor involving their own private property rights, to me, is a great intrusion.
Other questions or, yes, Commissioner Bernie.
Has the local council member seen these latest changes and what's his position?
We are actually in ongoing discussions with the council member, and I anticipate that they will continue through tomorrow in preparation for, on Monday, coming back to the commission.
Yeah.
On Wednesday, I'm sorry, coming back to the commission. And again, I would note that it is not just the council member, but other knowledgeable stakeholders who have worked with us throughout the department in crafting, first, the proposal, and now these responses, these changes that we're putting forward. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Sebel.
That wasn't notice, I wasn't going to bring it up, but thank you. Just, can you just describe where the appeals process plays for me? When does that come up? At what point? What would happen that would create an appeal?
You know.
Buildings rejects the request for the permit?
I'll get you more information on that, because we're going to follow up with some of the Department of Buildings pieces, and I hear, I hear your question, and I will address it, a little more context on.
Right, because it's sort of, right now, it's sort of, it seems to be packaged in with where the community board comes into play, and I'm not sure if that's true, I'm hearing this correctly.
There wouldn't be an appeal based by the community board. Again, this is, this isn't a ULR process.
Understood.
It would be an opportunity to know about the fact that an application is to be filed with DOB, and then one can appeal the issuance of a permit, or one can appeal the absence of issuance of a permit, depending upon whether you're the homeowner or someone who is opposed to the homeowner.
So if, when you say one can, it's beyond, say, the agency or the applicant, so somebody not in that relationship can appeal the issuance of the permit?
A neighbor can appeal. We.
Yeah, I guess it's true, yeah. It just seems so different when we're focused on these particular provisions.
People on notice to watch DOB.
We usually see, we as laypeople, not as a commission, we see appeals generally on larger projects.
Right, right. No, no, no.
They obviously are very minor.
And I do see the fact of how things work now going through ULR and the players that are in the ULR process having something to say. It just seems different when we're breaking it out, but I just wanted to understand the appeals process, but now I even.
And this gets to kind of the idea where we have these strict limits so that those discussions can happen, but you know, there, anything that's being built would still happen within these limits that we've defined for the natural area district. Giving that notice allows for that discussion to occur at the public so that we, people that may be a neighbor or other person wanting to have that engagement can air their concerns, but that, you know, these are still within a limit that if they'd come through this discretionary process, we would probably be moving forward with that application.
And I guess, just as a quick follow-up, and I know more will come of this in the discussion on the, on the process, but because this is primarily a notice-related issue, is there, I mean, maybe this came up before, is there a timeframe for which either the community board has to decide or make a recommendation one way or the other, or wait?
There is no decision, there is no decision by the community board.
So on the same day, the community board can get notice and the applicant can go to buildings saying they've given notice?
No, Commissioner, we will put in place, we don't have the number of days now, but we will put in place a minimum number of days following notice to the community board, because we want it to be actual notice.
Well, that's why I've been trying to see if it, you know, something that could happen simultaneously, that you say, I've given notice, or is there a timeframe that some, you know, without action, an applicant is stuck not being able to move to the next?
That's not the intent, and we'll, we'll follow up on Wednesday with some additional.
Commissioner Edie.
Yeah, just to be clear, just from my own understanding, what we're saying here is that the applicant would provide notice and have the opportunity for an engagement with the local community board, but nothing would preclude them from proceeding with their application to DOB once the notice time period is over.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so to be continued with more information on Wednesday.
Great. So the final piece is, is tools and guides, which we are using and.
This is the good news part, the feel-good part.
So I think that you should have all received physical material perfect, and then there's also digital on your packets, just the information. It's a draft. Remember, the text is a work in progress, but you know, you can see that we're getting pretty far along with this homeowners' guide. The homeowners' guide is something that we've committed to ensuring homeowners understand what they need to do. It provides information so that everyone is aware of how they can meet the rules at a high level. But then to take it to the next level, we're also proposing a technical guide, which will allow additional information for homeowners, practitioners, professionals, so that you have that kind of next level of information of, you know, like where are the numbers, and kind of a little deeper dive into how you can meet the rules. Additionally, city planning is committed to working with Department of Buildings, to creating forums and material for Department of Buildings filings, and tailoring a lot of the material for the special district. So this is basically creating layers of information. So you have the homeowners' guide, technical guide, and then material for Department of Buildings, who will be filing and allowing for their plans examiners and site inspectors to have all this information at their fingertips as well. So, you know, this is something that we're very excited about.
The thing that I'll note, in particular with respect to the forums and guidelines for the forums for the Department of Buildings, is that since we are putting in place strict numerical limits rather than a case-by-case negotiation, it will make the job more routine rather than having to digest a city planning commission negotiated arrangement for every property. So we actually think that this work that we'll do with the Department of Buildings will go a long way.
And I really wanted to thank Chow, who's sitting here, who worked on these two guides, and she's done an incredible job taking all this material and synthesizing it into such a digestible way, because there's a lot here, but you know, it, it's easy to understand with these guides.
Is this our artwork?
Yeah.
Yes, pretty good, isn't it?
It's really impressive.
Did Commissioner, Vice Chairman Hopless give you permission to use his guest house?
We'll discuss that Wednesday.
Okay, and with that note.
I believe that that concludes the review session for Monday, September 9th, 2019. The time is 2:47 PM.
Thank you.